Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're about to start our presentation on redistricting. Just bear with me one second as I set up the screens. Okay. So, as everyone knows, we have been in a long-term project since 2015 to construct and build a new elementary school. Since January of 2015, we've been working in partnership with the Massachusetts School Building Authority on the construction of our fourth elementary school in the city. It's been a long-term process and one that I'm very happy to share some exciting news during my superintendent's report, that on the 7th of this month, we got our temporary occupancy certificate, which is a very big milestone in this process. But, what we're talking about tonight is the process for redistricting students across the district. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start with some current conditions, just to let folks know why it is that we are looking for the fourth elementary school and why it's important to us moving forward. So, looking at our current conditions across the three existing elementary schools, you instantly notice that there are some areas of crowding in some of our elementary classrooms, specifically in the Jarwick 4th grade classroom, in the Richer 3rd and 4th grade classrooms. What we see there is, we can't, because of space... I'm gonna ask everybody who comes into the meeting just to please mute your mic, so that way there's no feedback into the school committee meeting. So, when you look at some of our class sizes, even if we could place an additional teacher into the classrooms, we actually don't have the space right now. So, at Jarwick Elementary, they are completely maxed out in space. There's not another classroom to be had. Richer is very close behind them. And while at Kane School, we do have a little bit of space, not a lot. So, when we're looking at this project to add our fourth elementary school to the district, one thing it's gonna be able to do is maximize the number of classrooms we have at the elementary level and give a little bit of elbow room across the entire district, which is very important. When we first started this project, well over five years ago, one of the things that we worked on with the MSBA was an agreement on enrollment. Now, we did our enrollment agreement in 2016, and at that time, we had agreed upon an elementary enrollment of about 2,350 students. So, one of the things that we've seen over time is that we have had an enrollment increase over that same period of time. That's much larger than that. Over the past three years, we're up almost 300 students in the elementary classrooms. So, what we're seeing in this process is although we originally wanted the building for 610 students, we're probably gonna be opening that school closer to about 680. Now, one thing to note is that the MSBA does not allow you, in the middle of a project, to change your enrollment. So, once we've agreed to that enrollment, which we did many years ago, that is the enrollment we need to stay with for the length of the project. Even if we have more information to be able to go back to them, it is a one-time agreement that we do. Think of it as a grant project, 'cause that's basically how it runs. So, when we look at this project overall, we're gonna definitely be able to get elbow room across the three existing elementary schools, and most importantly, we're gonna be able to bring 5th grade back to elementary, which has been a long-term plan of the administration and of the city, I believe, since the late 1990s. One thing I just wanted to point out is the school committee policy on redistricting. It states very clearly that the redistricting plans will be drawn up by the superintendent and then presented to the school committee. Our primary considerations are that we have an equal educational opportunity, that we're taking into consideration school capacity, transportation, and neighborhood lines. At the elementary level, we transport all students. We do not have a fee in Marlboro. We do not require a bus fee for anyone. And, we tried very hard to capture neighborhoods as they are and move them forward. And we'll talk about that a little bit later when Mr. Diaz talks about the process for redistricting. And, one thing I just wanted to point out is that, in this third bullet, the primary basis of judgment must be the equality of educational opportunity for all students, rather than the personal desires of any one group. We recognize that redistricting is difficult, and it seems that there is sometimes no right answer to any one question. But, what we're trying to do is meet all of the standards set forth by the policy and provide information to the community on why we made the decisions we did. So, next up, what I'd like to do is I'm gonna invite some of my cabinet members to talk about specific priorities that we established before we got into the redistricting process. So, first up, I'm gonna invite Assistant Superintendent Mary Murphy to speak about curriculum.
Thank you, Superintendent Bergeron. Our focus is on educational equity. The K-4 principles have developed a common instructional schedule that will ensure the same curriculum across all grades in all schools. Grade 5 will continue in a team-teaching model, and the 5th graders will have access to band, chorus, and orchestra, as well as expanded wellness in the 5th grade to include health education. Engineering will be introduced to students in grades 3 through 5 as innovation labs. We look forward to expanding academic offerings to all buildings in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Next up, I'd like Mr. Tom Platy, our Director of Instructional Technology, to talk about our technology in the new building and all of our elementary schools.
Well, we are committed to equity in all our buildings, both in terms of support, help, and in terms of equipment and technology hardware. Every student in grades 3 and 4 will have a Chromebook for use in their classrooms, and students in K-2 will have iPads in both class arrangements and carts. And, very importantly, we will have what they call smart LCD projection units in every classroom, K-5, by June of next year. In fact, right now, it's about 85% complete with every grade 3 through 5. By this June, we'll have a smart unit, and K-2, about 60-65% will have been completed. The equity goes beyond this, as I said, in terms of support, in terms of personnel, and all four elementary schools, so that students, no matter which school they're in, will have the same technology exposure and equity in terms of what they can do.
Thank you, Tom. Next, I'd like to ask Ms. Jody O'Brien, our Director of Student Services, to talk about equity in special education.
Thank you. So, all of our schools, when we open up the fourth elementary school, will have special education teachers, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists, to be able to provide those services, as well as school adjustment counselors and school psychologists to provide counseling services. Our district-wide elementary program, therapeutic program, the therapeutic learning center, will remain at Kane Elementary School, so no matter where the student would be going to school, if they need that program, they would be transported to Kane to participate in that program. The connections program will remain at Richer Elementary School, and that is also district-wide, so that is for students that have significant cognitive disabilities, as well as oftentimes medical issues that need to be addressed as well. So, currently, at Jarwick Elementary School has our pathways program, which is our autism ABA program. And, that currently has, because of the number of students that are in that program, we have four teachers associated with those students. And, that program will be split between Jarwick and the new elementary school. So, two teachers with severe special needs certification will remain at Jarwick, and two will go over to the new elementary school, so that we can have two classrooms in each of those buildings. And, the idea is that there'll be a sister school that would feed into each of those. So, for Jarwick, any students at Kane Elementary School that need this program would attend Jarwick, and if the home school's Richer School, they would attend the new elementary school. And, right now, with the redistricting, the balance of students in going with that plan works out well. There's between 11 and 14 students at each of, for the Jarwick program and the new elementary program, if we go with a sister school. Down the line, if numbers are higher in one of the programs than the other, there is the flexibility of being able to adjust that, say, with incoming kindergarteners from early childhood. So, that's all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. For our EL programming, one thing that we should note is that one of the largest areas of growth in the district over the past 10 years, and specifically the last five years, we've seen an increase of almost 85% in our EL population. So, we have also increased our staff and investment in EL as well. So, EL services flow to where the students are. So, if there is a school that has more EL students in it, they will receive more staff, full-time equivalent staff, in that school to be able to prepare them and to get them ready for their classes. So, one thing you'll see is that there may be an uneven distribution of EL staff, but that's because the services go where the support is needed in this area. For student demographics, I'd like to invite Mr. Doug Diaz to speak on that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. As we all know, the diversity of our student population is a strength here in Marlboro. So, as we embarked in this process, we wanted to make sure that that diversity was well represented at all schools. To embark in the process itself, we knew early on that to be successful in all of the priorities that we established, we would need the ability to analyze a lot of data, and we would need to analyze the data well. To do that, we partnered with a local GIS consulting company called AppGeo. GIS stands for geographical information systems. AppGeo recently successfully worked with other local districts, such as Newton, Lexington, and Weymouth. What GIS is able to do with their database is they're able to do geocoding, which is essentially looking at all of the GIS information from Marlboro, such as land parcels and streets, and overlay on top of that information, district-specific data, such as student addresses, grade levels, as well as demographical information. Once we have that information in the system, we're able to develop components or neighborhoods, which is consistent with the school committee policy for redistricting. Once the neighborhoods are identified, we're able to start moving neighborhoods together to establish what would essentially be the new districts. As we do so, we can see real-time what the impact is on each individual district. For example, we can see what the total enrollment is, what the total ELL enrollment is, as well as what the total low-income enrollments are. The culmination of that work, which was carefully designed, is the draft scenario that's being presented to the community tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. So, after going through all of our priorities and establishing where we were trying to create equity amongst the four schools, we were able to put together a draft that we are presenting to the school committee tonight. This draft may look, you know, a little strange on the TV, or if you're casting this from, you know, on the internet as well. I encourage you to go on our website, and right on our website, on the front page, there are links to our redistricting proposals, and we have a much more high-quality PDF that you can zoom into to look at specific streets. But, one of our goals was to reach capacity at the buildings. And, what we were able to do, as you can see on this chart, is that we are within capacity of 3% in all four elementary schools. So, Jarwick and Kane are at 100% capacity. Richer and the new school are at 97-99% as well. We also were able to keep the percentage change for low-income students across the district within the limits that we are in now. So, it's not that much of a change from where we are right now in terms of our student demographics. So, we were pleased to be able to get to this point. And, I'd like to just take a moment just to talk about where we have been and where we're going next. So, on February 5th and February 12th, we met and presented at the Richer PTO and at the Kane PTO. On March 3rd and March 4th, we met and presented at the LPAC meeting and also at the Jarwick PTO. Unfortunately, our previously scheduled meeting with the preschool was canceled, so I'm hoping that any parents who would've been going to that meeting can watch this video tonight, or watch it on the internet, or streamcast it. Tonight, we are doing our presentation to the school committee, and we are proposing this draft for their comments and review at a regularly-scheduled meeting in the future. The school committee can then take it up, and I just put two dates on here, April 28th and May 12th, so that way, the school district can provide notification to parents and guardians by late May or early June of 2020. And, that is our presentation for tonight. And, if you bear with me for one moment, I'm just going to switch screens to get our school committee members back on there, so we can take questions from the committee.
Are there any questions from the committee?
What I'll do is I will do a roll call, so that way, I would ask my cabinet to mute themselves unless they are called upon for a question, and I'll ask the school committee members in a roll call if they have any questions for the administration that we can answer. First up, I would ask Mr. Caruso if you have any questions for us. Mrs. Matthews, do you have any questions?
Sorry, Mrs. Caruso, I'm mute.
I'm sorry, Mr. Caruso, do you have any questions for us?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm mute myself. I'm not used to muting myself. The question I had was, of course, the ratings, I saw what concerns were brought up all times by parents. Nothing I found particularly overarching over the whole process, just some more technical questions about particular situations. But, at any time during this process, has anybody brought up anything that you consider to be an overarching issue that we had to deal with? And, if not, you know, that's great. And, if you did, is there anything that you felt we had to do to deal with that?
Thank you, Mr. Caruso. That's a good question. So, over the course of our meetings with parents, some parents did bring up concerns about the availability and timing of childcare, which is something that we are looking into. Mr. Diaz and I have reached out to the Boys and Girls Club, and they are actively trying to survey their membership to see if there would be a need, or I guess a demand, if you will, for an earlier start at the new school for parents who now have a longer commute. That is one question that did come up a couple times. I would believe that most of the other questions, we have been able to answer pretty effectively, and I didn't think there was anything else that was really outstanding. So, I hope that answers your question, Mr. Caruso.
Yes, it does. My top priority during any questions would've been, had a severe impact on any child's education, and I think you guys did an excellent job of making sure that that was all taken care of in every possible way, and I commend you for that.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Caruso?
No, I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Matthews?
Thank you. No, I just wanna thank all those parents and families that did come out and did raise their concerns, and I think the administration's done a good job answering those concerns, and the equity is clearly what the focus is. Hopefully, be in those classrooms soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Bowden-Henninger?
Not really any questions, but I'm just wondering, 'cause I did attend a couple of the presentations, and I know one of the topics that came up, this is just for folks in the audience, could you maybe just talk a little bit about how, like, the music program is going to play itself out?
Sure. Thank you for reminding me of that. So, in the 5th grade currently, students have access to our performing programs, and we were very adamant that we wanted to keep that ability for 5th graders to do that. So, in next year's budget proposal, we did ask for two FTE, one orchestra and one band teacher, to be able to still have 5th grade performing groups across the entire city. So, that way, every 5th grader had an opportunity to do band, orchestra, or chorus, which will be taught by the music teacher in the school.
Excellent. And, just one other question. I know this presentation was prepared in January or February, right? That's February, early February is when we started rolling out these meetings. I'm just curious, based, you know, between then and when we abruptly had to stop going to school, how many more students have been enrolled, you know, since then?
To my knowledge, very few have been enrolled. We have been mostly focusing on kindergarten enrollment right now, although any time a student wants to enroll, they can enroll in school, and we'll get them set up in our remote learning environment. I will check that data to make sure, and make sure I can answer that at the next meeting.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you. Actually, a lot of the questions have already kind of been addressed by others. One comment would be just to continue to stress that, from a curriculum standpoint, you all have had a lot of conversation of making sure that there is a lot of consistency across the board and equity throughout all of the schools, and I really appreciate how all of you have approached really meeting the expectations of the policy of equity for all of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy. Ms. Ryan?
I too don't have any specific questions. I think that you guys have done a great job in providing us with all the information, and I'm really happy to see that the new school is a good mix of students from not only Jarwick, but Kane and Richer. And, I think that, across the board, having the free reduced and the diversity pretty much equal around, amongst the four schools is a great accomplishment, 'cause I know that that had to have been hard to really balance that appropriately. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, is there any questions I can answer?
I think we covered them all in all the nights that you had at each school. It was great to get some feedback from a lot of the parents. Obviously, change is difficult for everybody, but I think you've done a great job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may ask, would the committee like to put this on the April 28th agenda or the May 12th agenda? I leave that up to discussion, I guess.
It's a pleasure.
I'd like to make the motion to move forward with this on the next school committee meeting's agenda in April.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to place on the next regularly-scheduled meeting in April. Any further discussion on that?
I will perform a roll call vote. Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Bowden-Henninger?
Yes.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is approved. Thank you very much. And I'm gonna go right to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an update on our delivery of meals. As of Wednesday, April 8th, 43,714 meals have been made and delivered to residents of Marlboro. With the anticipated delivery of close to 6,000 meals on Friday, we will be just below 50,000 meals over this time period. I can confirm that we did deliver close to 6,000 meals on Friday, and additionally, about 5,500 on Monday, so we are just about 55,000 at this point. I'm including the details below to show everyone how the demand has increased from day one. As an example, we were delivering about 876 breakfasts on the 18th of March, and by the 3rd of February, we were delivering over 1,300 breakfast meals. Our cafeteria staff, our bus company, everyone involved should be proud of their efforts to provide this essential service to the city. Thank you so much. School building project. On Tuesday, April 7th, our owner's project manager, Tom Gazzounis, presented me with a temporary occupancy certificate for our new elementary school. This is a major milestone in the project and one that we're very pleased with. Major construction efforts are completed, systems are being tested and approved, and we're continuing our work on landscape construction outside the building. Distributions of Chromebooks and iPads. Each school has messaged to parents about the availability of Chromebooks and iPads to students. Please let me reiterate this message. If you need a device to access Google Classroom or CSO for our remote learning plans, please contact your school principal or assistant principal. We're trying to make sure that families have access to our environment. If folks want multiple devices, we may not be able to accommodate it this time, but we wanna make sure that everyone has access to a device so their students can participate in our remote learning environment. We have handed out well over 1,200 devices so far. We are here to assist you and want to help. So, please reach out to your assistant principal, reach out to your principal, and let them know what you need. Decisions about celebrations, sports, and activities. At this time, we're still awaiting decisions from the Commonwealth on several important topics. Closures extending beyond May 4th, MCAS, which has now been decided, graduation requirements for students, which again has legislation, and other topics. Instead of canceling everything wholesale, my approach will be to delay and postpone events until we have enough information to make informed decisions. This also will include, although not in my report, we will have to at some point talk about our future trips abroad as well, and we will need to discuss that. So, when it comes to MCAS, I'm sure everyone has seen that the legislation was passed giving the commissioner the ability to waive or modify, and the information we have received is that the commissioner waived MCAS for this year. We are still awaiting more guidance on graduation requirements, and we're gonna very closely watch over the next couple weeks to see what decisions the Commonwealth will make in terms of the school year. So, I appreciate everyone's patience as we go through this together. And, finally, shout-out to Caitlin Geary for making this wonderful tie for me. It's of The Avengers, one of my favorite movies. Caitlin is the daughter of Earl and Brenda Geary, and she is one of our star students in the fashion program at the high school, and she was nice enough to create this tie for the school committee meeting. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Caitlin, and I really love it, my new favorite tie. So, with that, I will end my report and see if there's any questions.
Any questions from the committee? Any questions from the committee?
Could you hold up the... You can see it, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you.
Mrs. Hennessy?
Thank you. Just a quick question relative to the distribution of Chromebooks and iPads... Just a quick question relative to the distribution of Chromebooks and iPads. Do you have any ideas, Superintendent, from the building administrators about how many people, not, not numbers, I guess percentage probably an easier topic, of understanding, are we getting like eighty percent of the students, ninety percent of the students being able to somewhat participate? Do we have any of those numbers yet?
I don't have data to share with the school committee on that right now. We're still working on that. There are some students that we still have not been able to engage in the remote learning environment, and that's something that we take pretty seriously. We're trying, I know the faculty is trying very hard to reach out and make sure that everyone participates. They, they are going above and beyond trying to make sure everyone gets there. We're trying to solve as many issues as we can. One thing that we have found, even if anecdotally, and I can't provide the data for you, is that it really hasn't been as much a device problem as sometimes we've had a connected, connectivity problem with the internet. I have advocated to many people, including the vice chair, who's done a wonderful job of reaching out to our legislators and letting them know this, that if, if we are to receive assistance, one thing I would love to receive assistance for is to be able to provide hotspots in certain parts of the city to provide Wi-Fi accessibility. Additionally, we have reached out and we, we got programs from Comcast and Verizon that allows sixty days of free internet access to anyone in the community, as long as they are also participating in another government assistance program. So we're, we're trying to use everything under our power to get people connected and online. But I would tell you, as of this moment, it's not as much a device issue as it is an internet connectivity problem, that we are working diligently to think of new ideas and solve.
Thank you. That's probably what I had understood, but I felt it important to make sure that everyone was aware of that. I really have to give you and all of the staff a lot of kudos for all of the hard work on trying to get things up and running and available. I think it's been a, a great huge effort, and I think our district actually has been pretty far ahead trying to make sure that academically we are, we're moving as forward as, as much as we can at this time. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the members? Any other questions from the school committee? Are there any other questions? See none. I acceptance of the minutes of January 28th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor?
Mr. Caruso?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. Mr. Caruso?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Aye.
Ms. Boden-Hediger?
So, point of order, I was not at the meeting. I believe the policy states that I can or should not vote for them. I can't remember, so I will abstain.
Thank you. Ms. Hennessy?
Aye.
Ms. Ryan? Ms. Ryan?
You gotta unmute yourself.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So that was for January 28th, 2020.
And if there's no objection, I'll take the next four sets of minutes unless there's corrections or changes. The minutes of February 11th, the minutes of February 25th, the minutes of March 10th, and the minutes of March 24th.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Is there any discussion?
Uh, hello?
Hello.
Am I on? I, I was not at the 11th meeting, so I need to abstain from that one, but...
Okay, we'll take that one separately. On the motion made and seconded to approve, February 11th, Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Caruso?
Aye.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Boden-Hediger?
Abstain.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. It is approved, and on the minutes of February 25th, March 10th, and March 24th, there was a motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion on that?
None.
See none. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Boden-Hediger?
Yes.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are approved. Thank you very much.
If you could excuse me for one moment, Mr. Mayor, while I get a screen up for public Do you mind if I read?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the school committee is holding this meeting virtually with members attending remotely or in person in the mayor's case. You can, you can watch this meeting on WMCTV and also stream, streaming it live on the website. For public participation portion of this meeting, members of the public may provide comments by dialing 508-460-3503, extension 10121. If the line is busy or goes to voicemail, please call back, and please don't call the number after April 14th, 2020. Thank you.
Public participation? Is there anyone from the public that would like to be heard? Anyone from the public that would like to be heard? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Acceptance of donations and gifts. Mr. and Mrs. Gomta, Whitcomb and Marlborough High School Library Media Center, fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All those in favor? I'm going to take all three of these at the same time as we did with the minutes. There was a donor's choice from Whitcomb, grade five, Make-A-Space class, three hundred sixty-eight dollars and four cents. There's also a donation from St. Catherine's Convent Tri-Music Honor Society, seventy-five dollars. On the motion made and seconded to approve, all three donations, are there any, any further discussion on that? Is there any further discussion? Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Mr. Caruso? Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Boden-Hediger?
Yes.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
They are approved. Are there any reports of subcommittees?
Um, yes, if I may, relative to policy, we did have a virtual meeting last week, and we did discuss a number of different policies. One that will be coming on to the next agenda for review will be the heat index policy. Believe you, I have remembered a conversation that we had had, that the MIAA had moved something forward about concerns relative to having athletes out participating when it was too hot. So we have a policy that we have approved in subcommittee, and we will move that forward to full committee for the next meeting. And we will be setting up another virtual meeting soon, just continuing to work through the policy book and getting things up to date. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other reports of subcommittees? Any other reports of the subcommittees? Any other reports of subcommittees? See none. Members forum? Any members like to be heard?
Sorry, that would be Mrs. Hennessy again. I did want to bring you all up to speed as well as the public on a meeting that the MIAA Board of Directors had had a meeting yesterday, and there was a note that they literally just sent out, I believe just this morning, but it is available up on the website for the MIAA. A couple points that I wanted to make people aware of. There is a rule, number forty, for out-of-season for spring 2020 coaches, and this was discussed, basically allowing for coaches to potentially be able to do virtual workouts or participation, which would be purely voluntary. But just to make sure and be really clear, that there should be no encouragement for athletes to be coming together for any form of team workouts, captain practices, anything like that. And the reason that I wanted to really stress that is that there has been some discussion, not that I've seen here locally within Marlborough, but in some other communities where some student athletes have been getting together for practices, trying to observe the, you know, say, six-foot rule, but there's really a push to not move forward with that kind of a situation at this time. And I really wanted to make sure that the community was aware of that so that, you know, you can keep yourselves and your children safe. So I would suggest people to go ahead and, and take a look on the MIAA website for more direct information about that. The other thing that did come up in this memo was relative to the physical examinations. Normally, it's like a, I think it's a thirteen-month rule on your physical being up to date. MIAA has reached out to the Department of Public Health to ask potentially for a waiver on this to extend a little bit more time, but at this point, they have not heard back anything about that, and that thirteen-month rule would still stand currently for physicals. So again, I just wanted people to keep that in mind and make them aware, even though right now we have no idea what's going to happen with athletics. So, that is it. Thank you.
Any other members want to be heard? Are there any other members that want to be heard?
Yes, I just want to say I've reviewed the warrant, and I will be signing it tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other members want to be heard? See none.
Mr. Chair?
What's that?
This is Mrs. Boden-Hediger. I just wanted to thank the community for the patience that everyone, I think, has really shown in just unprecedented times. I mean, I think the city has been amazing in terms of providing opportunities for people to get information when they've needed it. DPW has been great. I know public health is working tirelessly around these issues, and I think just overall, we are doing pretty well in this city considering the circumstances. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Thank you very much. Entain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. Mr. Superintendent?
Mr. Caruso?
Yes.
Ms. Matthews?
Yes.
Ms. Boden-Hediger?
Yes.
Ms. Hennessy?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very, very much.